Hey, we'll get started. It's really informal. Just, this is an information workshop by TCA codes. We don't have agendas or none of that. It's just talking back and forth about what we want to see go on, what any questions you may have. And a couple of things you can't do. You can't speak up on anything you would vote about. So if you ask me how the budget looks, I can tell you how the budget looks, but that's gonna be about it. I can't comment on any of that stuff that would delineate towards a vote. And y'all, and y'all can't either. I mean, I just spoke with C-Task again in the last few days. So, anything that you can't let be known how you should vote in any kind of way. Other than that, we can talk about anything you want to talk about. In the future, when we have workshops, I might get with you ahead of time. I called it Houston County and just seen how Joey does it, because he has six years. And he, he, uh, they get together and just, they have an agenda and everything. But they make it more like an open meeting and run it like a county commission meeting. So, they're not, they're not operating the same way we are. So, again, we can, we can talk about everything. We just can't talk about delineate towards a vote. So, so, um, I guess I can start by telling you the Parks and Recs grant's going really good. I signed the contract two Fridays ago on that. So, we'll be looking like going ahead and looking for engineer here coming up. Probably got about another month or so. And then we'll have to go through, well, and then environmental at the same time. I don't know a lot about environmental. I've only been a part of three grants, start to finish that. We're even close to this size. So, you start talking about environmental, so they can, I think, Rick, you might know a little bit more.
They want.
Yeah, they, they send them out to like six or seven tribes. And there's a state office involved, a federal office involved. And they, they say, yeah, you've got a creek going through there. You might not need to mess with this. There's a certain type of men in there or what, you know, that would, you know. Is that pretty close? I mean, that, that's what I've been told.
There's some kind of bird will root in one of the trees.
Wasn't there a bat problem here or something? Do I remember that?
I haven't got a bug or a.
Fruit bat.
A fruit bat?
So, next year, certain period.
And it held you up? Held it up way better?
God bless, that's terrible.
There have been.
It must be him. I smell that.
There about three weeks.
Yeah, so I, I just.
Three weeks on the bat.
The bats are at jail when we built them, the jail. That's what, that's what that was.
Bats in three weeks. Bird were in the state, the fed. It goes till July 16th. No trees in park, nowhere to be touched.
So, we should be after, at least after that, we won't get anything done before then for sure. But, uh, everything is, is going good, looking good. And we just, we'll be starting here sometime near in the near future.
Is that for all the parks or just that one? Because then we talked about putting parks.
Well, so what we, what we want to do is knock the lights out of the ball field first. Because that light, the style of light that we're putting in down there is on state contract. Now, the contractor's not on state contract. But we won't have a lot of bids coming in that's gonna bid out different. Like this contractor want to use this light or this light or this light. We're using this. It's on state contract. We're getting the lowest price on it. That, that'll be different coming in. So, that's kind of something we can, it's not low hanging fruit, but you know what I mean? It's something that we won't be, our hands won't be in that anyway when they go to work down there. And then, you know, the Parks and Recs committees will have to get in full steam after that. You know, and we'll decide. Of course, the park at Hickman Creek and Indian Mountain are gonna be somewhat similar. We're going to put a playground type facility there and, and, you know, all that stuff. So, they're gonna be sourced. And I don't know that they won't knock those out at the same time. But again, that's the engineering side of that, whatever they decide. Speaking about that, I got a call two weeks ago from Ms. Rosalina Krieger. She is the chairman of the Montgomery County Health Coalition. And she, she was coming down to Stewart County to, to our health coalition over here, but she didn't make it. But anyways, the hospital sold years ago and they put money into a fund in Montgomery County. And they put this committee council in charge of it. And it sat there and they've made good decisions with the money and got some high interest, you know, and things like that. They've really done well in protecting that money. But now they're trying to get it back out to the communities that, you know, Stewart County was a major part of that hospital. It was successful. I was there. So, Stewart, Houston, Montgomery, Cheatham, Robertson, they're putting money out in those communities. And I just laid it on the line. I think a walking track around that whole ball field down there will just benefit everybody in the community. It's wide open, safety wise. Think how many families come to interrupt and shit up. So, I'm gonna meet with Ryan Greed and Gary Dacus and Danny. Danny's going over there too. And we're just gonna take different portions and walk it off and count the, get the footage and all of that. So, we can just get an idea. Roughing it, counting my tases and stuff, it's probably gonna be five or six hundred thousand dollars in that neighborhood. So, and it's no match, you know. The county cannot apply for that. That's not, it won't be county. So, I went and spoke with the AAFC and seen if they would. Because I work with Kendra really close. She's really good. So, I, I thought that'd be really good to host that, you know, to bring it in. I'll do all the legwork on it and securing it and, and hopefully they give it to us. But it's, it'd be really promising there. It'd be really good for, you know, to, to set that field, that whole area off down there. And the AAFC's on board. They want the walking track and all that too. They see that, see it as a necessity. So, that's kind of what's going on parks related wise.
I know there ain't nothing going on park related wise in Indian Mountain.
No, there won't be for several months. So, it's still, like I told you from square one, we still gonna be in fall. When we get there, it's nothing changed. The state has given us a really good timeline. They've met all their timelines. I thought it was.
They keep moving the goalposts or you do what? Somebody keeps moving this goalpost back. Because we were focused on going like that, that, that in the last year. Now it's spring and then it's gonna be fall.
Well, you can't go back in any commission meeting and tell me where I said this thing.
I go to a town.
That's what I'm saying. Go back and show me. I've never said that. Because the state told me I couldn't sign the contract tool. What did I tell you? Up end of February, I think? And they were right on. I signed it the first week of March. So, I mean, we're still on time. But it's not me. I'm not holding it up. We've done everything. We've got it in ahead of time. And I know I wanted it in email too. I mean, I'm not, I, but, but it's not. Okay, I'm gonna tell you. But that, they, we've been on the same timeline this whole time.
They don't move like we do.
No, we don't. We, we don't, they don't move it off. They don't get in no hurry for nothing. I mean, and that's fine. I mean, and we're using a lot of their money. So, we're giving us one point three out of their pocket.
Are some of the small places like what Brian's talking about, Indian Mountain, do you have to do all that environmental things and?
That's, that's the number one they named. They named, she specifically named to me Indian Mountain. She said, because when we send them out.
Nameless place.
That's exactly what she said, believe it or not. That's what she said. She told me, she said, I don't know how much trouble you have. She said, I don't know about Indian Mountain. Have y'all ever had environmental work done down there? And I said, I've never had environmental work done here.
Yeah, we got cross creek national wildlife review right there. It's already done.
Might be worse because, but now she specifically said, just, she says, just me hearing that name right off the bat wouldn't say, uh... So, yes, they do have to have. All, all of them will have to have. And some of them they'll just check off. I, I don't think the taking up of the poles and putting new poles in, I don't know how, I mean... If everything's based on common sense, I don't know how much environmental should be needed.
It's not about environmental.
You will find out. Well, well, we're good now. They're putting bigger waterlands in Indian Mountain. That's a good thing. It started, they got it all for her.
They got about two miles up the deal.
Yep.
How much rock they get? All of it?
Well, they're in a bunch right now. But I will tell you this, since you, you two asked, it's one of you asked, but even, but we added two hydrants to that road, two fire hydrants. So, that will be, that will be coming and it'll be another one down in the night. And that, that aren't close to your park.
And that, that is an excellent thing.
It is. I thought that was a really good one.
So, all the naysayers.
Shakes total.
Saying all that, uh, the grant money when we stopped at the last term of the prior administration, they wanted the dollar for West Stewart. Look, it's being, with our portions being used in North Stewart. Uh, what they're doing in West Stewart couldn't tell you. I haven't seen nothing. But I know they're doing something in North Stewart.
The hills bigger lines will help in the future.
Certainly.
I mean, it'll maybe able to.
I'm gonna say, if we ever push water over that hill at Indian Mountain, we're gonna have to get it like, like if we're doing it to get it there.
I think that's, it's, that's huge.
Lot of grant money there. Lots. We, rural development gives us a lot of money.
You know, that, that grant that I get, I mean, I, we started on in the very, when I first got elected, that grant. Y'all are the only ones that have actually started your programs on it. West Stewart and Dover are still waiting on, I know Dover's just waiting on two things.
It's a, it's a hurry up and wait thing. There ain't no doubt.
So, how, how long did y'all, was y'all working on that a year or two before?
Oh, at, at least.
Yeah.
Well, talking about, um, parks and things like that, I mean, I know that there's been a lot of things like on Facebook and... What, what do we need to do down at Gray's Landing Crossing? What, what do we need to do down there to make it usable? Um, you know, the apparent, you know, the trash is being, what, what do we need to do down there? I mean, what does everybody, what's everybody think that we need to do down there in order to keep it park-like? I know the lights are busted out, uh, you know, trash is all over the place. But, you know, what can we do down there in order?
And it's always thankful to stop that.
So, when I came in, I, I went to Danny and talked to him one day. He called me over there to his office about something. And I specifically asked him in a Parks and Recs meeting one night, Vince may have been there, about, are we gonna have to get some kind of committee? Our maintenance cannot do that right now. They just, they're, you know, I took mowing, took the mowing contract back. We bought a mower last year, you guys did. And we started, we, we're doing all of our mowing and our weeding and all that stuff ourselves. And that's really, they're, they're on. Between that and the jail, they stay busy. But he told us in a Parks and Recs meeting that when they put that money, when you guys put that money down in that park, the sheriff said he would lock it every night and he would let the inmates go down there and clean it up. And now I do know the inmates have went down there at least once, because I called Ricky myself and asked if they could. And he, he brought a bustload of trash out of there. But if that program with the sheriff is not working, if it's not working, and then, I, I mean, it, it's not getting locked, it's not doing any of that, then we have to, and eventually we're gonna have to protect ourselves. And if that means locking that gate and not unlocking it until we have a better plan, that's what we have to do. I've been down there, I go down there probably once a week and just check it out. The last time I was told about a post where they went down there and took pictures of trash everywhere and all this other stuff. I went down there the next day. There was no trash overflowing. The lights were broken, but they were broken the first time I ever went down there. Trash cans were not knocked over. Could have been cleaned, of course. Yeah, I mean, would you let your kids go down there and play right now? Probably not. You know, I think, I mean, that, it's gonna be awesome system, whatever we do down there. Because I can tell you right now, the county does not have the means. And that's what we've harped about in the Parks and Recs committees is we do not have the means to.
If you don't have somebody sitting there hoping all the time, looking at.
Well, I think we put it out there. Point, and the overflow for Paris Land, it's coming to that side when they're trying to get boats in and out. I don't think we utilize it as a county as much as bringing resources in. So, I hate to close it up.
I don't want to crap.
Water holes around here and that's where people come here for. But I think to your point, it's, you know, I've been there several times for the same thing and get posted, go down there. I mean, could it be cleaned up better? Yes. You know, um, not to the point where I called the sheriff and said, hey, can we get somebody down there? But, you know, we do a, we need to clean up out in Leatherwood area. And the next time we talked about that, I was gonna try to get the team to move together and maybe go down there. But probably setting up a committee. If you wanna keep it together, somebody come out and help.
And, and to that, the, the program that margin ha, I have going now with the trash, it, it's going really well. Until you get an email, where's Dunaway Ridge, I think is where it's at this morning? Y'all, there's a, it looks like by county out there. It's horrible. We've gotta pay somebody to go up there and clean it up. And we're gonna do that. We're gonna, we don't want that sitting out there on anybody's property. But if, if we need to try to work with marginal way to fund a, you know what I mean? Some kind of committee to help clean up that park. But it's, it's, it's bigger than just the trash down there. I mean, I think we all know that. It's.
And then it's that point of the years, before it was a park, before we had a gated drugs, prostitutes, none of it. Little one down there.
I went to the river. They bring the river up and it comes out. It was right over everything.
That's when it was a mess the worst the last time, when Ricky and them, now that, that day it was bad down there. Ricky and them picked up.
Washed the gravel lab and does everything.
Well, I mean, do we, I, should we make it a seasonal thing? Like right now, you know, there's no sense in being down there because the water's so low. So, should we consider making it a seasonal park?
Like Dodge Creek's?
My lake's hard to resolve.
Yeah, their playground area. But, I mean, we could, we could consider that. And then, like you said, if, if the, you know, if the litter grant were to, to help with nonprofits going down there, maybe getting the sheriff to commit to, or Ricky or whoever can take the inmates out. I mean, you know, to commit to once a week or, you know, whatever.
Put it on schedule.
Put it on a schedule, right?
Especially with, you know, holidays about to come up and that's when we get, we fast up for one.
Right.
We went down there after the Fourth of July last year. Pretty bad. I think that's when they had to go down there and clean it up.
That probably is.
Now, what's bad, gets bad is the road going in there. Like I said, every time the river comes up, it's gone again. And you ain't got nothing but craters in there.
I had that call last week. That's exactly what she said. She said there's, it's hardly impassable on a, on a smaller vehicle.
Yeah, if you ain't got a four wheel drive, you don't wanna be hurt to get back in there and move a little summer.
Leather should go over to sheriff's office when the radio starts down there. You can't get out over that block. So, once you get down there and get tied up with somebody, there's no, you'll have to just tell them how they out for ten minutes.
How's the, was, is that a fa, the new radio system?
It's a new different thing.
It's not, I mean.
And put something on the other side of the river.
You just can't get out now there.
Yeah. I'm all open for sure. We can work it out.
Does our agreement with TBA say we have to keep that thing locked up at night?
Well, I, I've only found two documents with TBA. And I know one of them is an instruction type deal, but no, it didn't have anything, but.
Well, I think the point of locking it up at night was so the sheriff's office didn't have to go down there and check. You know, so if you lock it up.
That and keeping all them people out of there.
I agree. It needs to be locked up at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, but also thinking that people come up on boat. So, you know.
Yeah.
Keeping it locked at the road isn't gonna do any good.
And then they'll walk around too. They'll park down there and walk.
And ride around it. Somebody's just about found the road around the gate down there.
Another thing, see a car parked there. Get on foot and go down there.
Yeah, probably better than the one that's in there.
It probably is.
It probably is. Well, I just think that, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a good place, you know, and, and trying to get it to where it's usable, people can get to it, you know, whether it is by, by car or boat. And then maybe getting it like, like Archie said, maybe on a schedule with the sheriff's office. And then getting maybe a nonprofit every couple, every couple of weeks, you know, to go down there and do a, like a major cleanup or something like that. But I, I think it's a good spot and I don't think that we should dismiss it entirely.
Can we turn it over to the Boy Scouts? We have to ask them.
Boy Scout?
Yeah.
I think they'd probably go down there.
I'm, I'm with recommend children down in that area.
Huh?
I wouldn't recommend.
I'm just sort of, you know, clean up and monitor, stuff like that. They do other projects. They've had several recreational areas.
I mean, if they get.
I guess I'd have to win down there at time, time range and the time range. But if we, if we encourage it in the county. We get the money every year.
Yeah, you got somebody there every day.
For all our nonprofits. It's always a problem. Is there any way to build it up?
I mean, there's two something. It ain't no light.
Is there a way to bring, like, it's always gonna be that way down there as long as there's nothing down there. It's not gonna be like Paris Land inside. Is there anything we can do to bring anything, you know, on that side, on our side of the river? Capra. Made by them bodies overwhelmed. They can't put their body there.
TBA wasn't, we were, what we had down there was all that TBA will allow us to do. Playground?
No, nothing.
Cannot modify.
They were, they were trying to say. Basically, we could only have it open daylight now.
It was?
Why you trying to make it look so bad?
Here's me and Archie trying to make it look good.
Tell it lives on that side of the river.
I'm, I'm a little bit, I, I would like, I got, I'm probably thinking outside the box here, but I'm a little bit concerned with the lights down there. You're not allowed in there at night. And to me, when I cross the bridge and see a light on it, makes you think I'm allowed in down there. I'm wondering if there's a place that in the county that could use those lights. I don't know what they are, the ones that are not broken. I wonder if there's a place in the county where we could utilize those lights and just take them out of there.
I mean, the two homeless people don't need lights.
No, no, right.
It, it just, it gives you.
Are the tables still in there or they get ripped up?
The tables? See, I don't, we would have, we would have to go back and look at the grant. Those lights and tables come in.
I'm just asking. Are they still there or they get ripped up?
No, no, no.
All that was done through a three star grant. And then because the money we got from three star wasn't enough, TBA gave us a small grant to finish. Like I said, we could not have any electrical things, such reason with the solar lights. Because that was, I said, didn't require anything to involve any of our. We were allowed to do the big TBA ones, the fresh fans.
Yeah, who picks up the trash down there now? Of course, trash can. Sounds like a bad.
I know. My wife and I, my wife and I's done it one week. Ricky Robertson's done it one week and, um, and I'm sure there's other citizens that have helped out.
There's a rule discussion. We have a TBA, you have to sit down. So, I'd like to redact a contract maybe. To build that place up and make it not. Reevaluate it right now. The reevaluate, if you will, it can do.
Yeah, we got a good relationship with TBA.
Depends on making contact and talk with the TBA. Virginia Gray? I'd like to get a coffee.
The lake was scary.
I feel, I mean, that's all, it's just gonna stay the same way all, the whole time. That's something. We do something different. I mean, you even have the Parks Patrol that goes across the river on the other side, you know. We can get in agreement with them. They drive across that bridge every day, probably twenty-five times a day.
You talking about Paris Land?
Uh-huh.
Forget it. There was supposed to be an agreement, joint agreement with us and Paris Land. They were gonna take care of some of that security too. Then they backed out.
So, how long ago was that?
When we started.
They can't find it.
Well, I think with, you know, if, if we did take the lights out, then when people are driving by, if they see, you know, driving across the river, if they see... Because a lot of times I'll see, you know, fire when you're driving across and you know, like, you're not, you're not supposed to be there. So, I, I mean, that may be, if you do take the lights out and you see some lights there, whether it's fire or headlights or anything like that.
Then you know you could call the sheriff's department. I'm not checking with that grant. And say, you know, making sure that, and talking with, if I need to call TBA, I can talk with them and say, you know, do we have the ability to remove that number one? And if we did, you know, you get what, they're nice lights, the ones that are still not broke or whatever.
Well, I think there's only like one that's not broke.
I seen a couple of lights on there coming over the bridge the other night. There's a couple of lights down there. It could have been a car.
Somebody loading their.
Motorcycle. Loading up picnic table. I don't know. I just think.
I mean, I know it gets used because you can't, you can't get in there. If you come through there in the summertime, there's always people on that bank. So, it is being used, probably not by the right people, as you said. I've never drove down there as far as where people were there to say that, you know, the homeless people or whatever else was talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, I like, I kind of drive by there when you hear about the trash being, you know, trash or whatever. So, I'm not down there when, when there's any, but every time I've ever been down there, there's not, not anybody there. So, I can't tell you what they're doing down there, but you do see the trash or, you know, people take pictures or whatever.
I mean, my opinion, it just sounds like we need to talk to TBA.
See what our options are.
Right.
And it's a good time to do.
Because they, because they know, they see what's going on down there. You know, how bad it is. I mean, they, something if you're done. And we can have a discussion with them, bring it up somehow. I think we revisited, but I'm thinking, you know, working, get there to send me that, the file that was filed back then and what we said we were gonna do. Then maybe contacting the TBA out of Paris and meeting them down there and say, here's our problems. See if they can bring some of the, you know, life stuff. Because they, it's not the only park they have around. How, how do they work through these problems themselves?
I know, you know, me working across, ain't very good for you, but I mean, I'm, I'm here to call or whatever you need me to do. Just tell me, I hear the call, talk to you, you know.
Yeah, well, I can get you a contact and whatever we can.
Across the room there, trees landed. Now that's patrol. I've been in there numerous times, let people park, put their boats in and have right there. And, uh, I see border service and everybody in the patrol in that place. But nobody goes to the other side of the river.
Be that, we should be treated the same.
One of us, four service, one's TBA.
One's TBA.
Yeah, but if we can get, you know, if we can get, Margie, if we can get, you know, some of that nonprofit money to be able to clear that up, if not, you know, get the sheriff's.
Here's the trouble with the nonprofit, with the litter grant, it's only for holidays.
Okay.
Now, when we had paid labor, those ladies would go down on Monday and clean up the trash, uh, you know, from the weekend. They'd go back on Friday and make sure it was nice for the week. But to say that you can really pay somebody, because it wasn't the litter grant that helped develop that. It was a three star grant.
Okay.
Well, I think we still work with the jail and maybe match that out with them. If you work for the, if you do, a lot of the work release, those guys want something to do besides sitting there. So, they have resources to put it there. Just need to make sure that.
And, and we can, and that's something we could run up the flagpole at the litter grant. I mean, Margie's got a good relationship with them. I've talked to them like two or three times. Nobody's done what we were doing in the state. They, I, I think even one of them told Margie probably wouldn't work or something, but we could do it. And it's, 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 I mean, it's doing what it's supposed to do. So, to say, I mean, right now, we definitely couldn't just say we're gonna go pay somebody. But if we had to go to them and say, is this an option, just to ask, you know?
Never heard that.
Just to do what Ms. Martin's paid labor was doing, you know, if they can go down and, and, and help out.
I mean, we own any of the land on that road except for that?
We don't own that either.
We don't own that either.
We don't own that either. What I mean, you know, I just.
You can own that.
I'm just, in my, to my point is, we always talk about how to make money as a, you know, community. That's a prime strip right through there. Call KOA or somebody like that and start working with some group to put resources here that doesn't need a big infrastructure put involved into it. We don't have to build schools and this and that, you know. In, like I said, if you use, all the area resorts over there are usually tapped out right now. Like you can't, you're going on a bidding list to even get in. So, it tells you people want the recreation. Right. You got more people over there viewing it, going by, you're gonna get more people cleaning it up and calling. Whatever has to clean up the trees and stuff on our side over there.
I had that conversation Saturday again with our state senator. He's coming next month. He's gonna be here. We're gonna try to, I mean, I... The first time we discussed all of that, got it going with Henry County, our state senator swapped. You know, we had Bill Powers, now it's John Stevens. So, we're, we're trying to get everybody with John, which he, he's on board. It's just, that's gonna be a much larger project than Dover was, you know, those trees. Which, to me, it's the state's responsibility. They, they were supposed to be down there spraying that anyways, year round. They have a, they have a policy to spray all of that, all the way down to TBA's level. And that, that guy's got, on our side's got trees going all the way down, you know? And it, and it would look tons better. I mean, it would just be so much. Literally, it just looks bad because, and, and it's not, they didn't have anything to do with this, but you drive all the way to the Stewart County side on the bridge and that's where the trees, you know, it's, and then you're like, looks like we don't take care of our house, but. you drive all the way to the Stewart County side on the bridge, and that's where the trees, you know, it's, and then you're like, looks like we don't take care of our house, but we don't have it, we can't go down there and start cutting trees.
Right.
Get your boat out, let's go.
The other thing I, I, I've been thinking about, that's off the Parks and Rec thing, it's job wise in the county, like, what we're looking at future wise, for cars, doing TBA, and then we got Century Armor, and I talked to Charles, you know, and Charles said, you know, they can't even have anybody look inside of it yet, they're replacing people until like the end of June. Well, I mean, where are we at with that, because I'm looking, we don't have many jobs beginning, but as much as we leave everything we got.
So, um, Century Armor's not gonna let anybody go in there, and that's, when Charles and I talked with the state, and then, you know, Charles is, is, I send a lot of, most folks to Charles because that's a city, I mean, the county doesn't.
Right, right.
But, when we do hear of companies that are interested, all we can do is say, hey, we have a building that's gonna open in July, you know, a lot of those guys are like, we operate in July, you know. So, we, there's, there's, there will be something going back in that building, it's, I mean, I don't, I don't get into it.
I know, yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at.
But no, there's.
You know, TBAs will go down to what, I mean, like fifty yards maybe, and then, I just feel, I know this is a long deal, but I mean, if we just had an industrial park on this side over here, we got it, access close enough to parcel, surely we can get some piece of that industry to come this way.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I know that's a long term deal, but I feel like we need something here to get some unemployment going.
State's growing like crazy.
Not, not pizza places.
They're, they're booming.
So we got a bunch of pizza places.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we definitely can use ten more restaurants tomorrow, all the way across our county.
That's one of the things here, a lot of it. There's, there's hiring signs on every place as you drive through here today, McDonald's, I stopped to grab a bottle of water, it's hiring here. I mean, we want jobs, but we need people to fill those jobs, and I only speak because I went, we moved a, you know, in a nutshell, we moved the factory from Lexington, Kentucky, to Columbia, South Carolina. And now we're having to move it somewhere else again, because of the fact that they don't have the resources to employ us, as far as part of our business, so. Industrial park in Kenley, the village.
Well, that's where you look into what businesses you're trying to attract too, and try to find the right one.
We have, we had a couple of businesses come by, and, and, and it's not a good fit here. I've talked to Clint about it, when a company calls you and you can't wait to meet them, and then they get out there and hand you their packets, and they're paying thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour with no benefits, it, it doesn't, we have those jobs. We have a five percent unemployment rate right now, with a three percent differential, and that's because of the military, there's so many retired military here, and we love them. But those guys, until they're age seventy or seventy-two, they're considered part of your workforce, even if they're retired from the military at forty-five. So, if you wanna take those guys out, and that's what I was telling the state a couple of weeks ago, if you wanna take those guys out, we got probably a three and a half percent interest, I mean, three and a half percent unemployment rate.
We get more benefits than five.
What's that?
We get more benefits from five.
But, but, yeah, they, that's the truth, but, um, when, if, if, so if I promised a company that's bringing me a hundred jobs for twelve dollars, fourteen dollars an hour, and they get here, and I, and we cannot, as a body, supply them with a hundred, we, we have, we have not done a good job. But now, if you get a company here that's paying twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four dollars an hour.
You're going on broke.
You're gonna start seeing people move drive to Montgomery County and, and stay home and things like that, so that's, right now.
Well, then, then you got people who don't want the company because they're paying that much. We've said, we've just been through that, we've through bigger.
Oh.
Paying that kind of money and people don't want it. You can't win on jobs around here.
Yeah. That's why I still say we save what we do very well, and we have recreation.
Why figure it would work?
The thing about recreation is, like I said, that there's no infrastructure, we're not trying to live here, they're wanting to come visit here, like, we'll rent it for their campers, spend their money, and then, but we gotta give some resources.
I'll work people. Fifty years, fifty years. They wasn't in. If someone's looking for a job, they'll work. Where, where would that come in?
Well, we've had several, uh, we've had several infrastructure committee meetings, and, um, I mean, we know what it's gonna take to bring in a, a large company. That single thing that it's gonna take to bring in a large company is gonna bring everything else with it.
Right.
Um, because when we put sewer and water, let's say we could fund it as a funding body, let's just say that we cannot come anywhere near that, but let's say we could fund a fifteen million dollar sewer project across there. We couldn't hold the influx, Montgomery County's almost tapped out, you think about our school systems and our, right, we are still one of five counties in the state of Tennessee with no full-time doctor, we have zero full-time doctor right now. Getting into these clinics, they're fantastic, we love our clinics, you can't get in.
Right.
That's not their fault, but you can't get in, you know, I'm working with, trying to get fast pace here right now, but, you know, just to have something on that side of the river, again, the problems we face with those larger companies, you face with those smaller businesses. Don't have the infrastructure.
Most of the, the Z word, you know, people don't like to hear, but before you started that process, you started doing, I was like zoning wise, controlling what's happening on that side.
A major thing was zoning, to me, is education, educating the folks, that we're not trying to tell you, you can't have a broken down car in your yard, I'm just telling you, beside, um, the Dollar Store and the high school and all that, we couldn't put, you know, a fifteen hundred trailer, trailer park in. Um, that, that's the difference in zoning versus codes, but you've run them together when you say it, typically, what do you say, codes and zoning, codes and zoning, and they're two separate, completely different things.
Yeah, because people, people go nuts when they're.
Well, and that's why I said, education.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take years of education to get people to understand the difference.
Yeah, till, till all the farmlands go on, and there's one subdivision, and they wonder, why did this happen?
And there are gonna be a hundred and fifty trailers.
Yeah, that's the thing, why'd you let it, no, the question is, why did you let it happen?
Right.
I got a place on Big Rock, this lady's been in there most of my life, right next to it, somebody bought it and moved in, there's four horses there and all, sloping and things, right down, running through dick and everything, you know, that's why, get it in the bag.
Still matter.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think as a county we're ready for codes, I really don't, we're not, but zoning, we are ready for zoning, and if we don't think about that in the, in the coming years, starting to get some, even business districts, let's just call them what they are, business districts. You're not gonna get any major, major, the fir, one of the first thing I did when I came into office, is I heard it for a year, how we were gonna get a Publix or a Aldi's or whatever. I called three different people that I knew, two of them was in the business, one of them's a store manager at Aldi's. All three of them said, no, we're not even putting another one in Montgomery County right now, we're not coming, no, you don't have the trip, you don't have any of that. And our, you know, and them saying that we're not having zoning now is gonna be major, you know, they're, you're not gonna get a, uh, what, a Kroger's or an Aldi's or, which we would, you know.
Completely understand the public.
Well, you're not, you're not, and you're not gonna get it here until you get, and, and I'm not preaching on codes, because I wanted to emphasize that they are two completely separate things, they're not the same.
On that note, let me see something here, I got a call last night from one of my newest constituents, back down the end of the road behind West Vico, uh, part of that West Vico back there.
On your road?
Yep.
Oh.
This guy, I'm saying him, not me, he was all, he just wanting me to push building codes. And I said, no sir, I won't do it, I said, because you're grossly outnumbered in this county. I said, you know, if somebody wants to build a shed, why should they buy a, a building permit? Why should they, why should they have an inspector come out and inspect it? Uh, if you wanna run a light bulb out there, you don't need a PhD to do that, uh, why do you need to pay a contractor to come in and do this stuff? But this guy was really pushing on that, and boy, we buddied up, we buddied real good on that one.
Do you get a burger next time?
Here's something. That's all I got to say about the codes. You would've liked to better fly on the wall, anyway, I got a major concern here, and I know this is going out on the airwaves, and people's gonna label me this, that, and the other. In the next three to four years, we're gonna see an influx of illegal immigration in our area, in our county, it's gonna take three to four years before they all filter out. Marsha Blackburn was there, she said, don't tell them, for lack of terms, American coyotes are driving them around, dropping them off wherever they wanna go and whatever. What are we gonna do when we get overrun? We're gonna be looking at schools, we're gonna be looking at healthcare, we're gonna be looking at everything. We ain't ready for that at all, we ain't thought about that at all, we ain't looked down the road what's coming, not to mention what they're doing to West Vico back there. Trying to make it a subdivision, well, there is people, get foreign in the Indian band out there, but wait till this big influx starts moving in. We're not ready for any of that being a small rural county. We might ought to think about it, make some kind of plan, what are we gonna do? Just wake up one day and say, whoa, what do we do now?
It's, it's, no, it's definitely an issue, it's, it's, it's.
Well, that, that's, to me, where the Z word comes into play.
What?
The zoning, if, if, if you had zoning back there, that subdivision, wouldn't have to go before a committee, before it changed from rural farm to being able to be subdivided, and you don't have to have zoning in codes. And that, that's what I, I'm about, and I, I don't care who knows that, I'm sorry, but zoning, zoning is not a bad thing.
Amen. If them people involved that back there, they, they know that they had to drive by your house to get back there.
They do.
They do now, no?
You know what they do, because I'm usually out the road hollering, running them slow the heck down.
Amen, brother.
I do. I holler at everybody. Slow down.
I was gonna say, now that you don't have anything to do, you can do things.
And I do, and if they wanna get, you know, they blow back there, and a lot of times they'll blow right back through again, well, next time I see, I get the tractor up and just cross the road there, you know, and make them stop.
I'm glad this Alexis got here and sat beside you, kinda built you up.
Well, I'm a.
Somebody like talking about this stuff, like, seriously, it's like, great planning and zoning and just like, things in the future, do we set like, something, a committee or something like that, to kind of look into this stuff?
Study it.
Yeah, just study zoning. Well, you know, maybe just, I'm a great guy.
Okay, so. Every year, man.
I remember one time they brought up codes and zoning, courthouse, you remember that?
State perishes, state perishes the zoning laws and all of those regulations that go with it.
My only problem with zoning.
Yeah, but you have to adopt it in, we've never adopted, we've never adopted, we've never brought it in, the county powers after nothing, and we need it bad.
We start that, we start having a planning session, and it, you hear from the negative people, you don't hear from the positive people, and, uh, what I've experienced, it, it, uh.
But there's a lot of po, uh, uh, negative people.
Sure there are.
Yeah.
You don't hear it here, you don't hear the ones that, I don't have a problem with that, you know, uh, and if you don't get that started, then.
Oh, Melissa's right, it's gonna take a while to educate to where people knows the difference in codes and zoning, because just like you just started talking about it, what'd you say, codes and zoning, codes and zoning, I mean, it.
I don't want either one of them. Rippers, rippers don't like it, no.
We are still, sir, how, not saying. And I agree with that, we are.
I mean, and nobody is gonna tell me, I hate to be a redneck, but I'm gonna be, I'm a Harrah Medley long, but you can't go rip on a redneck. Nobody's gonna tell me what I can and can't do.
Own your own property?
Amen, brother.
Own your own property, nobody should tell you what you're gonna do.
You didn't think, there's young people on this county court, that would get real beautiful, codes and zoning, I know it, everybody's name, who knows?
It's hard to adapt it far along, because then what may be a part of the new code.
Who's gonna zone my property?
My house, your house, gonna be.
Nobody's gonna zone your property, will you?
I, see, that, that, that's what I'm saying, the education process.
If I own that land, I'm seven dollars short, somebody's gonna zone that one way or the other.
If not, oh, yeah.
Unless you sell it.
If, if.
Unless you sell it, you, you're a grandpa, so if you sell all this, next guy's gonna do it.
Grandfather.
Your grandfather did.
You'll start out at a, whatever, if you've got a house in the middle of your thing, you'll start out at R one.
Who's gonna determine what's zoned out?
The state has, has all of that laid out, I mean, it's not, you and I would not come in here and say, what's R one versus C one.
We don't have a zoning committee as a county.
If it ever comes out, you'll have to have a, a, if we ever get there, yes, we'll have to have a zoning committee, but.
Who's gonna zone it for what?
Change, uh, parameters are set by the state of Tennessee, now, you can come in here and, and you're, you're asked for a change, and we can look at it and say, that does or doesn't fall. Okay, let's say it does fall in the change, we have the ability to change it, let's say it doesn't fall within the change, you have the ability to petition the state and go to their committee, we, we wouldn't be setting anything that's not already there.
I think it's similar to Olivia's place down here, where she, like, you know, where Olivia had petitioned to have her zone.
Somebody's gonna tell me what I can and can't do, correct?
No.
Yeah.
Yes, not in the codes, not, we're not talking about codes.
Hey, if you own the church on seventy-nine and the Dollar Store, like you said, you own that piece of property, and you put a zone, and you just said, and I owned it, I said, hey man, I just wanna build a house right there, and they said, no, it's done, it's decided. I either gotta go to the state or go to the board and say, hey, I wanna build a house right here, twenty dollars.
Yeah, you just come before the committee or the state.
Well, I don't come through there, I have my property, I wanna build whatever I want to be.
That's the point. You don't have to now.
No.
That's, that's, that's why there's a forty acre subdivision on a place that used to be farming.
You're never gonna stop that, Montgomery County's got it, there're codes and zones out the wazoo, we'll look at them.
Well, that's what us contractors are buying and coming in there and planning.
You said.
Your contractors are coming in there.
If you don't believe this big building.
You got enough money, you can change it, that's my point.
That's it?
You ask, you ask Brandon Lewis about, for him trying to set up a building up there, and what all he has to go through, uh, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm not gonna be for codes, I, I don't, I'm just not a, I'm not, I don't.
And I don't understand the premises of trying to zone up seventy-nine, because that's where a growth's gonna go.
That's where, that's the reason why I talked about zoning, I said, a business district.
If I own that, and want to do something with it, I should be able to.
Shane, the same people that you're saying will come in here and fuss about it, will get on Facebook and fuss because we don't have an Aldi's, or they'll fuss because we don't have a grocery store, they'll fuss because we don't have a clinic, I got a fussing last week because we don't have a doctor, those are the same people that'll do that. You gotta, we, as a community, we have to make up our, our mind, are we good with what we got, which, personally, uh, not public, or not, uh, politically, I'm fine with what I got, I'm, I live in Dover, and I don't, I don't have that problem, I've got five acres and I live in the middle of it.
He's a lonely.
But the same people that call you and say, how come we're not doing this, how come we're not doing, they're not gonna come here, and you can't expect them to come here for a hundred million dollars, and, like I said, end up with something crazy right beside you, because you're in a business district. Now, I'm, I don't think zoning the whole county is, is where we need to start out, that, I, that's way on down the road if it ever happens.
Question.
You're gonna have to have a business district to grow, to get your business, am I right or am I wrong?
You are, you do not have to zone the whole county.
No.
I wasted every dime.
But industrial parks just as, as if you sit over in Cumberland City.
Is it zoning?
Yeah, just zoning zones industrial parks.
Yes.
But that's in Cumberland City.
They have to follow Cumberland City.
I understand.
But it's all industrial, you can't put nothing but in the industry.
If you can find a place, come on city, that side.
My purpose of bringing it up is for the future, coming up, and actually, eventually we're gonna have several, they're eventually gonna build that up, or we just gonna let people come in there like you were talking about to do, if they want to, and.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah.
Or if you want to kind of control what's happening and not let Carson come in here and control it.
I don't, I, I'm, again, I'm not for codes, uh, and, and to start off with, I'm not for zoning the whole county. I'm just saying, we will not fix the problem of businesses, larger businesses coming in here, until we get some kind of business district, some kind of zoning. Until we get some kind of business district, some kind of zoning to start off.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm with.
Now, a business district, you could, you could say, I'm just throwing this out there for an example, not. You could start at the bridge and say it shuts off at the ball field, that's a, and, and three hundred yards on each side of the road, or whatever, just for example, that's our Stewart County Business District.
Okay, so if I wanted to open a gun shop, means I can't do it on my land, I'd have to go over there?
No, 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 that means you could open it a lot faster.
And what's the stop?
No.
Once you do zoning, and what's the stop, the zoning committee for making? And changing?
Commission?
Your deal.
Everything a zoning committee does comes right before the commission.
All of a sudden, you become business.
No. A zoning commission is a recommending body, they, they are no different than the budget finance, uh, just recommending.
They can change it on their own.
Hey, Rick and I said.
The person that owns the property's gonna have to come and ask for a change.
If you sit from the Dover Bridge to, say, North St. Louis, well, if you look at Luke's Lance Pizza, he owns all them apartments there, them are residential.
Yeah, well, now, he was trying to put two committees together, sound me like, from what I was reading.
Looking at buildings more down the road.
I don't consider those residential, I consider them commercial because of what they are. I consider residential.
But the state decided apartments residential.
But could you get, I, I mean, I, I, I know that, you know, down seventy-nine pretty much Swift owns a lot of that property, could you get them to?
It's, it's zone difference.
To zone their own property as a business district? I mean, could you do that?
I, I.
I don't think so.
I, I don't, I don't know, I think you probably could, but what, you know, teeth wise, let's talk about what happens if a business says, yeah, I'll buy your property for this, and I'll go buy what you're saying, and then they don't.
Right.
Where did, where would that, would that?
I just know that you see the signs all over Montgomery County, zone change, blah, 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 public area. Yeah. And these people don't know. And if they almost screw somebody up on doing, they're gonna do it on their own property, that's what I'm trying to say.
I mean, to your point, you got more control when you have the zones, but I think we really need to make the pros and cons. And look through it and hash them out for us all to understand, you know, what we would be diving into. And probably bring in an outside source of some sort, has a background of what these causes, cuz to your point, you can't stand around and not do anything. So, what is it, business district makes sense, but there's still gonna be people out there that have property off that way that they say, hey, I want it to be residential, we're saying, no, now it's business. Know your grandfather then, well, then the next person who buys it, well, I wanna be grandfather there. We don't, you don't understand how to increase that in. But it's to the point is, I probably, there's more than we need to go pros and cons and say, hey, let's see, and then if there's.
Your chair.
Shane, Kate.
Our phones will be ringing tonight.
Listen.
I like that.
We're not, I, I. You're not, I mean, this is, it was brought up by Bradley number one, I can tell you.
I'm just looking at the future, what's happening coming up.
But what you're looking at is absolutely one hundred percent correct.
And I feel like it needs to be talked about, and that's the reason why we made these meetings, I have conversations with boys.
Well, now that you got thrown under the bus, are you still wanting?
I, I was elected to become commissioner, I know people hate phone calls and haven't listened to all the crap, but calling, I don't care.
Oh, I, I, I'll mail them up.
I, I will tell you, we went through this one time before, and, and, and mine and change districts, only one I can speak to, but they're, they're totally against it. So, I would have to vote their way. But, when, 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 uh, when this was done before, it wasn't, it was six months after it was done that I had a neighbor come to me and say, hey, they're, they're piling pallets up beside my house. And, 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 and we don't want them back.
But before.
But what that you can do back?
I do, but it was designed for subdivision regulations, that's all it was designed for, nothing else. And it got all misconstrued, nobody was listening.
Which is what Melissa and I were saying about the education.
Nobody heard, all they heard was zoning, and that was not what it was about.
Right.
And that, that's what I'm for, I, I mean. It worked, did it?
Well.
All, all that there is, it can do that for most parts.
Well, the problem, everybody just in this table, I would trust them and that. But the problem is, once you get them, you got it. And then years from now. The problem, so I, I don't know if you could like, of course, I guess anything can be changed, if we lay some kind of rules out. That you have to be followed, I guess they could change them at any time.
It'll be a long one, I mean, it's gonna be down the road.
But the problem is, is like Eric said, you got people in my district, our district is totally against it.
Absolutely.
Then they'll turn around and say, so and so's doing so and so, I want you to do something about it, but then you say, well, what, what you're doing, well, I can do that.
Cause that's my problem.
Everybody would be.
But looks bad, you may look good at least.
Well, and you, and you know, like, when we talk about a subdivision, you know, subdivision, because I've talked about, and it's not even my district, but when you bring in. However many houses people are trying to bring in, in Indian mound, you've got, say, a hundred houses, you've got a hundred wells. And you've got a hundred septic tanks that have to go in that same subdivision, what happens to the groundwater at that point, you know?
Well, stateside, when they send out their shit down.
Which could school infrastructure even hold another hundred?
And, yeah, I mean, schools couldn't hold that many people, especially, you know. Either way.
But we, we're, we're on the right thought process, though, which said, anybody could, hey, you'll do that.
Eli, you know something about farmland, which Marsha and I was talking, you're gonna talk about, we did with this all the time, what do you do, though? Um, I know the state legislature's passed a thing on Tennessee Farmland Preservation Bill. I don't know exactly what all it'll tell, I'd say, and I feel like the C R P, they're gonna give a little bit of money to keep it as active agriculture. But what do you do? I mean, if you own, uh, four hundred acre farm, and you pass away, and your kids get it, and they don't farm. So, all we do, tell them they can't sell it, I mean, I mean, what do you do?
No, I get it, there's pros and cons, yeah.
No, there is, there is a bill there coming up for that.
I know it. Or you can enroll into it, but, I mean, what do you do?
And, and, you know, I lived in Montgomery County for a little while, and, and you're right, I mean, it's just, all the farmland is pretty much gone. I mean, I, I lived on Dotsonville Road and coming, just coming down seventy-nine from, you know, Dotsonville Road to here, all this, all the farmland is pretty much gone. And, you know, you certainly don't want something like that to happen, because.
The boy farmer that keeps his farm, he had just been built all the way around, and had nothing to trouble his neighbors all the way around.
I mean, here, here's a good example, like, out, out there on Seven Mile Ridge. You know, look at that, and then, and now, now there's an airstrip going out there, and, I mean. Wow. I mean, I get it, he wanted it, and it's his land, he can do what he wants, I get that, okay, congratulations. Yeah, it's a nice one, too.
Dude, it's, it's legit.
Who's putting that in?
Ed White, and it's legit, it's, it's. It's nice.
But.
Clint, I need to bring your, your plane closer.
Yeah, I think being closer, I'm saying more reason.
True.
Stolen, right?
I think if, if as a county, we ever get to a place where we need. Zoning, I'd really believe a, a business district type zone would be the first that we would need to experiment with and to see how it goes, and you can control that, you know, a little bit better than. I, I don't know. A lot of the county, I, if you ever passed, uh. County zoning, I don't see that, I don't see that it would even, I, I don't. I don't know what the reason would be for passing from, you know, the whole entire county, I, I don't.
Some years ago, we mentioned, that you alluded to, you might wanna make seventy-nine your business district, everything else would be agricultural, residential, that's where you left it.
Yeah, and I, and I think, if, if we could, you know, eventually, if we can work towards that and see how, and then, you know. There's so many steps to take, that county powers act has to be adopted by legislative bodies. Before we can do.
Planning commission takes over.
Before we can do anything.
Once you do that, it's not any county, but it's not no county to start with to have you zoned.
Right.
But if you got a good one.
Yeah.
Where they will put things like, that's supposed to be, that make quick the land and everything.
Well, I mean.
But you can just drive by the neighborhoods that's got some good planning commissions across this country, and you can tell. What's going on, what happened.
Two of these got them, which don't.
I spoke with one of Bone's neighbors the other day that said, I hope you don't ever run sewer and water in Indian mound. I, I don't want any of it, I, my water's fine, my sewer's fine, I don't want, he, he actually said, they're not getting on my side, on the side of the road, he said, I don't care how much rideaway y'all got, they getting on my side of the road, so you better plan for it on the other side. The same day, that was about ten thirty or eleven o'clock at the courthouse, the same day that afternoon, I got a call from a lady in Indian mound asking me when water was coming. So. When, when we do hit Facebook light open and everybody's saying we're not doing nothing or this and that, we got internal issues to deal with before we even try to go get the fifteen million dollars, that's what I think. Uh, so.
Anything you decide you wanna do positive, I don't, you see in the paper, uh, a critic has come up, how many critics, and who, who's critic, who's critic, you know? And, um, nobody's against anything, everyone's against it.
They usually speak their mind.
It's a, it's a slippery slope.
Well, this is why I was looking for words, was for, must have had this to help people a little bit closer, but where more going? Not, but some of it's just probably, especially a part of the conversation. We're not making any decisions.
If a lot of people watch this, they will see, they will see, and they will get back to you if they're for it or they're not.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah, I've talked, I mean, that, that, that's wrong. Uh, that I've talked to against it, but like you said, a lot of education with the codes and zoning, it's not.
Yeah. But I do think you have to start off small, and do some kind of small business district, and say, is it working? That's how we're gonna attract these.
It's better to, it's better to be proactive than it is to be reactive. You can, you can five hundred people coming in here and you don't know what to do.
Yeah.
I think we started this the first time I was on the court. Early ninety-one, and I got run clean out of town.
Somebody in time mentioned zoning a commission being.
My mom living up for three days.
We, we, I was on the court whenever we started, we do, I mean.
Cindy, can you buffer this part out?
I'm sure I can.
No, it's, I, I mean, it's, it's a long, long way down the road if y'all ever decide to zone. I always said, always. But, but, the same folks. That fuss about not having enough clinics and not having another grocery store, not having five more pizza places, um, those are, just.
Point is, you cannot make them come here.
I agree with that.
No, you cannot.
Years and years and years of trying to do certain things, if they don't wanna come, they're not helping. And I talk about doctors or whatever you wanna call them, they're not helping.
We don't have a doctor in this county, we don't have a physician in this county.
And they stay, and they stay plenty full, you can't even get a warrant.
They get two nurse practitioners, two or three nurse practitioners over here doing, Dr. Bangs quit, he was my doctor. He's the only doctor over there, yeah, well, he quit, went somewhere. Now we got nurse practitioners.
I think we lost one of them this week.
I don't know, I'm glad to have them, though, cuz if we didn't have them, we would be in a uproar right now. So, a lot of people.
Won't come here.
You just remember, a lot of these male doctors, they have wives, and if the wife don't wanna be here, they ain't gonna be here. I've, we've run the vet for a long time.
They probably wouldn't do it.
Pile the money at the end of the year.
We, we paid one to stay here one time. When his contract ran out, so did he. Cause his wife didn't like it, did he?
That's exactly right.
That's Dr. Abraham.
Didn't like Stewart, Danny?
No, his wife didn't like it.
A lot of amenities we don't have here that they do in larger cities.
She was there to educate, that's the problem.
That should have kept him in business from the disease.
What else, Alexis? How are you?
I'm good, Cumberland City's good.
Cumberland City's doing good.
We will soon.
Unless people stop.
Now, is that one in Park and Rex?
That is, yes.
Okay.
Um, so the Parks and Rec plan for Cumberland City is to tear down the school and construct, uh, a couple of restaurants there. Not on the school, I mean, not exactly with school, that's just. You know, and then keep building down there, they have, they're applying for brownfield grants and some other stuff that would really be, uh, assistance to them if they can get it. I think it's like five hundred thousand dollars, so.
So that gives them the back on the spot then?
Yeah, so, and so, yeah, there's a lot of.
I spent lots of time with the bigger brothers.
You learn anything? No. Somebody else was. Listen, you gotta talk about it, it doesn't matter, we, it doesn't matter if you're for it or against it, or whatever, however you vote, however you vote, and that's however many, you know. We're gonna have a district that's gonna want it, I bet, and then you're gonna have six that probably won't, so, it is what it is, so. I, I only made that point to say, that's one of the first questions when a company asks, you know, he was talking about jobs, uh, what is that, what, you know, and. Um, I will tell you that, uh, I, I did wanna bring this up in the informational workshop. I've spoken with Rick just slightly about it, um, I went and toured Nashville Wire. Man, they're growing like crazy, guys, they're growing like crazy, can't get enough help. Paying more money than they've ever paid.
Yes. They're paying better, and they still can't get people, can't.
They are, that's correct, and he's still behind there, they wanted hooked up with the folks at Century Armor, in case any of those people that were displaced by Century Armor, they wanted them to know that if they had, they had. Um, seventeen fifty is where they start out-ish. So.
Around there?
Yeah, about in that area.
Hi, when I, when I open up on the hill, I have fifteen women that need a job.
Do what?
I said, when I open on top of the hill, I'll need, I'll have fifteen women that need a job, they can all go to the same spot.
Yeah, the industrial park, um, they are dealing with another company, and I, they don't want me to say their name right now, but they called me a couple of months ago and, and, and talked to me about their plan, but I sent them straight to. To, uh, Mr. Seah, and, 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 uh, he got him in touch with Cass, so they're, they're talking about possibly eighty to a hundred jobs there. At the new facility, so.
Looks like we have the jobs.
Yeah.
People doing the. I'll strike that one off my list. I mean, it was on my list for the nice meeting, and they're talking about jobs, cuz we always hear that, and I, I, I work in Clarksville, most people around here do work in Clarksville. What, what makes us go that far? It's all about money. But then, you know, here, where is the jobs? Well, I know that all the resorts out there are hiring, so, hey, guys, hit Brownsville, Dodge Code, they're all hiring. Docking boats, and sure, you know, but, then, like I said, I stopped at the store there, and signed up there, and I'm like, how many people y'all need here? It was like, three. To run a shift, to keep that, just the Exxon open, and they're hiring at, you know, a pretty good price, make dollars, it's paying more than it's ever paid.
And, and to even add to that. And I see it through my wife and my kids' business over there, and then I talk to the guys at the pig every day just about. People are coming back to work, too. Covid is kinda, you know, it put that stigma on everybody, and a lot of us, you see more jobs out there ever, cuz nobody wanna get back out of the house and go to work, and you're starting to see that now, uh, to whether they're going to work, so, I think some of that will. I think you're gonna see some, especially your businesses. Uh, with the younger guys, and they're over there, they're gonna get out and go work down there.
Hope so. But a lot of these small companies here, and small businesses like that can't afford to pay somebody seventeen dollars an hour. They're trying to get your weekly workforce in.
In our area, if a company comes in, they need jobs, there's a, a big lack of housing. What, what about Oprah?
Tennessee Reds usually get some. That's why they're gonna build houses whenever.
Residential, there's just a lack of housing.
Ain't no house. Big rock, they're running them buildings, anybody leaving, they play with them.
People coming in like twenty dollars an hour, there's no.
I don't want anybody coming in, I'm just asking your county. Say, you wanna come visit? Buy stuff? And go? Sorry.
There's a lot of people, including me. I, I can move back here if you're.
All right, friends.
And I worked at Clarksville, I didn't wanna live in Clarksville, and it would work, well worth, fair work. That's a good road now, too.
We go down sometimes at lunch, uh, sometimes Clint and I'll jet down to, um, Rebecca's. And, I, when I was younger, I would go in that restaurant, and I would know everybody that's in there, but now when we go, we don't know half the folks. And then you start talking to them, and they're, you know, it's one of the. And then you start talking to them and they're, you know, it's one of the, one sixtieth guys that moved to Bubba's Mills, or it's one of the fifth group guys, those guys that are not gonna get sent out of here, you know, and there's a bunch of that going on in the county right now, it's, it, I like it, but I mean, I, I, I do understand what you're saying, but leave us your money.
Good place to live.
Yeah.
We have to raise your rates.
You can't have enough veterans here, when, when this stuff hits the fan.
Oh, absolutely, no, my point was not that, it's maybe, you come out here, you go to, like our neighborhood, we come off the water on holidays. Like, people who live in our area, we don't go to the lake, cause all, everybody else is on there, so.
We call them.
Which I don't mind, I'm a hundred percent one A.
We call them Whitney and Wardens when I fish live.
You can have it all you want, but, you know, that's where we are, we got a lot of recreation here between LBL and all those nice features of this, you know, county. I just don't think we're taking advantage of them as much, when you've seen capgrounds, to my point, they're all booked up, means people wanna come and visit. So, we don't have to do infrastructure with that, you're just gonna start getting, if we do have some zoning or something to get bigger, better restaurants or something like that, and still, our mall and all companies are having a hard time trying to stay alive in this, in this market, so we need more recreation for them to keep coming back for. Don't live here full time.
He said, don't live there.
Y'all got, what else have y'all got?
They're telling about you already, Ray.
I don't know yet.
What are you pushing over there?
Give us an update.
Thank you, Albert.
Mr. Mayor.
Julia, you really love her?
Who? Hey. Get your attention, Mayor.
Yes.
Give us an update, what's the latest, is it true, been just over, done and gone, or what?
No, no, they, they did not go in the industrial park, so they had found a piece of property beside that that, uh, Mr. Chris Pitts was gonna go under, you know, was interested in selling. I, I guess they couldn't, there was a lot of property there that's in the flood plain, and, you know, they, they, they couldn't do a lot with it, so I, I, they just didn't like it. We have two farms right now, um, well, there's never been farms, but they're picking up called farms, um, that will work for them. Um, so, all of the grant money that they were looking at acquiring, it, it was tough because the state ECD board says, we're not, until you get funded, we're not gonna go help you. But, then the funding people want you to have the ECD's board, you know, the state economic development board's approval and, you know, so, so it's a chicken and egg scenario with them, um, now they have a, their funding investors have stepped up and said, we're not applying for any more grants, we're not, we're not doing any of that, find a location, they sent it to the engineer, the engineer sent it back a week before last, said, yes, it will work barring environmentals, and they have some environmental concerns there. There's a very nice creek close to that property, so, they're doing studies on that, they should be another two or three weeks probably is what he said last week, so. No, they're not dead, is it, the one thing that, and Mark will be able to tell you more, and Rick, cause they're in that business, the one thing that has hurt them is the chicken and egg factor, plus, um, if you, they don't get to the market first, they don't get to the market, I mean, that's right, I mean, it's gonna be, and, and by market, I mean, middle Tennessee, west Tennessee, east Tennessee, I don't mean just, I mean, it's, we're talking the state, we're not talking about. So, if they don't get here first, they won't get here, but, now they do, I've talked to their, I don't know what he's called, their lead investor, he's got two or three guys that jumped up out of Franklin and wants to fund the whole deal, so, it depends on, I mean, it's still, it's still a long ways to go, uh, to make the story longer, it's still got a long ways to go. So, it's gonna come down to environmental.
A lot of regulations gonna go in there, lots of regulations gonna be in there. They gotta jump through lots of.
Environmental, uh, so that's, I mean, it's a, it's a bunch, so no, they're not dead, and, and there's still, the gentleman that's wanting to start that business has just moved right here, on the other side of Paris Avenue, so, he's getting closer and it's, it's, it's not dead, but it's about, it's like being. We want it, I mean, that's, that's, you know, but, you know, it's, it's, there's still a lot, so.
You know, let's say, once again, they gotta, we talking about jobs all the time, and people's on land, jobs, jobs, and jobs, and jobs, and jobs. Then you get somebody and nobody likes it, no, we don't want them, no, we don't want them, no, we don't want them, you can't make people happy bringing jobs up there.
Well, we already have them.
Well.
Nobody's working it.
You gotta take what, when you can get, when you can get it, because they ain't lined up out here on the highway looking to come into Dover and set up a shop.
Job wise, we're, we're, we're going to be, you know, we're, we're gonna be in, in another couple of years before I think you see people stop driving to, out of town to work, you know, whether it be Henry County, Stewart, or Houston, wherever they're working. Um, because we're still trying to get to that pay scale.
I said, most of our graduating kids move.
I still ain't heard, I can't hear.
He said, kids are moving out.
A lot of the graduating kids move.
And, and I will, yeah, and, and to, to, just to kinda talk about that a little bit, most of y'all know John Ken Ridgway, I, I've had him over here several times. Henry County's mayor, super nice guy, in my standard of excellent mayor, cause I've seen how he worked up at the state level. Um, he has taken another job, so they will have, they're gonna have a race over, I don't know when they'll have it, um, but he is now the, I don't know if I'm saying this right, as the director or president of TCAT. He's taken over a huge job, um, but he told me, we were eating lunch one day, and he said, if, if I do get this job, I want Stewart County, he said, I want every kid that wants to go to work that don't wanna go to college, that wants to get in this trade field, he said, I'll work with you to make sure. So, that's pretty promising there that he, um, he recognizes that, you know.
He's a good man.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's fine man, uh, but, that's a, that's pretty promising there, to, to help with our, our kids that are getting out, wanna go in technical fields and you know, I just wanna make it guys so that if they wanna come back here, they have the opportunity to, they don't have to come back here and work for ten dollars an hour, you know, as an adult male trying to raise a family, come in here and have recreation and, uh, at least a job, don't have to drive an hour or whatever.
Well, and I think, I think that goes back to Alexis's point, as far as housing goes, you know, the, some of the apartments I couldn't, I couldn't afford to live in, you know, and I don't know, I mean, obviously I know that the, the price of materials and things, but, but housing is really an issue in Stewart County, regardless of, of income, it's just, it's just an issue. And I know that there are several developers or, you know, builders that are trying to add more apartments and things like that as they go along, and that's, you know, something to look forward to, but.
Yeah, we want it all to whack.
Yeah, Ben, Ben's go ahead and get you another.
Court going on up here.
I need a trailer park.
Another one?
You're crazy.
Why not?
I bet I get eight to ten calls a week, somebody wanting rent, I just don't have it.
Well, and I, you know.
Nobody move out or move in.
Charles has the same thing going on, and, you know, Luke's built that one, and they built that one on Spring Street.
We have a contractor that's, I'm not gonna get into his business, but, he's fixed to make a pretty good dent in, in some of that, but I also think it's gonna go back to what you originally said, he builds nice stuff, I'll tell you, I've been in it, I've.
I know, I, I know.
So, uh, but it's gonna be, it's not gonna be, you know.
Yeah, and, and we do have the job, you know, like Archie's saying, we do have the jobs, and, and it's a decent, it's a decent wage, but if it is a single person, it's hard to pay that, it's hard to pay that rent, um, I know, you know, a couple, a couple of girls that are just, you know, they're getting roommates and things like that, just so they can pay the rent in a, in a two bedroom apartment. And, and that doesn't, um, that's nothing against the people that are building places, because they are nice places, but, you know, I wish there was a, an area that we could develop, and I don't wanna say develop very loud, but an area that we could, an area that we could develop something, you know, with a lower income bracket, I don't wanna say, you know, but, it, it's, it's unfortunate that people are having to find roommates and, and those things, just to be able to afford a, an apartment, you know.
So, when I, when I owned that trailer park that I had, I was just like Vince, every day, you were getting five phone calls, and it didn't matter if it was on Sunday. So, there's tons of people looking in that bracket, I mean, it's just, and I, and I don't blame anybody.
It's a five hundred, six hundred dollar market, you're not gonna find a house for five or six hundred bucks, you got a trailer, it might do five or six hundred bucks.
Right, you, I mean, you can look at Facebook and see how many people are looking for a place, you know, looking for a place to rent, and I know, and I do know, you know, Charles just posted two different places, but, you know, for me, it would call, I would have.
Fifteen hundred?
Yep.
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah, it was over a thousand, but, you know, for me, I'd have to find it, if I wasn't married, I'd have to find a roommate.
So, the, is there some, um, like, help out there to help counties with, say, even five to ten year planning strategies?
There, there is.
That can.
There's two different groups that, that do that.
Can you kind of look at your county and, and if there are anybody saying, we'd like to move in this direction, I mean, dealing with housing, what, what group of people are you gonna want to target, what group of people are you wanting to burn in?
So, the big player in that, Rick, you can correct me, but what I've seen right now over the last two years is rural development, that's the big player in, in that field. And they do, they come in and do studies and, um, and sometimes they'll say, listen, you need a study done here that we don't do, you need to hire this book, or, you know, hire this to do this, and then they'll put it on again, I've seen that, um, and, well, I've seen, not seen it, I've heard of it, I've heard of him speaking, I wonder if he's really doing it. But, yeah, that's, that's definitely.
To your question about not being able to afford the rent and whatever. When I was a young man back in the seventies, uh, it was same then, you know, you had to get a roommate to get off post and get out of burbs, you know, you had to get a roommate to help you pay your rent then too, and that was even in a trailer or something, you know. It's always been that way.
Well, I think, I think a lot of it is, we have, we have the jobs and they're paying pretty decent, but a lot of them, I, that I know of, don't pay, they're not, they're not looking for people to work a forty hour a week job, you know, I, I don't really know anybody that works at McDonald's on a forty hour a week job, I don't.
That's why they don't hire anybody.
Yeah.
They keep signing up all the time.
Right, I, I don't, you know.
When you make, when you work thirty eight hours, you don't have to pay them benefits, Obama's taken.
Oh, they wanna back it thirty two now.
It's thirty seven and a half right now, thirty six and a half.
It's just, it's just, we, you're right about houses, we don't have, and it doesn't matter for mall owners, houses are whatever. I grew up in mall, my whole life.
Other than tornadoes, I never worked at any.
Uh, but, you know, we don't have.
Vernon Sanders, a billionaire, and, uh, that's what he wants. I mean, at thirty two hour a week, what do you think?
That, that, that's what they're going for now, is making it a thirty two hour week.
I wanna run something by y'all real quick, don't wanna know how you're gonna vote, cause, I'll probably say this is great, if, if anybody talks about voting, so I don't care nothing about that, let's get that out on the open. I've spoken with some guys from the sheriff's office and from the state and all this other stuff, and I, y'all don't see me get political a lot, I'm not, I'm not that guy, so, but if we don't secure some of our, and I know we talked about illegals already, but if, as a county, we don't step up to the plate and say, country speaking, if I can't buy land in your country, you can't buy it in my county.
Right, right.
And if we don't, if we don't take a step forward, now, I don't know how much teeth that'll have, but I want our state legislators, which I've spoke with them on this issue, and our people in our county, a lot of, some guys at the sheriff's office, I was talking to them, and they were telling me that the drug bust, that was in Indian Mound, those people were traced all the way back to China.
China.
So, that means, in some form, we had a Chinese company of some kind doing illegal activity, and all, none of that makes sense for us as a county. And if it was that easy for them to get property in Indian Mound and Leatherwood, if that's where the other one was, I think, um, I think, I think coming up, uh, I think coming up, uh, I really think we need to stand up as a county, and again, I'm not asking you how you're gonna vote, I don't care, but we need to stand up as a county and say, in some form or fashion, if you're one of those communist countries or whatever that, you know, you can't, I don't care how much money you got, you can't go buy acre ground in China. Don't let you.
Does a house still come up for that?
Well, they're working on it, but it, it's already failed once.
So, we're talking about a resolution or something?
Yeah.
Pass by the commission?
Nineteen sixty eight?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, and it's, nineteen sixty eight is moving at a high rate of speed.
Well, we need that stopped, guys.
Bad, it, as a rural county.
That means the state's gonna set our tax rate.
Yes.
The county commission won't be able to.
The last thing I saw going was they were capping it at five, you could not, four.
It's down to four now, I believe.
So, you can't raise property taxes more than four percent.
Of what your.
That doesn't make no difference. We, we, we still need to. If you needed, if you even do that, I think you had to go to register numbers or something.
Yes.
And then it would only be good for four years.
And then it goes back to whatever the rate was.
Whatever it was before.
So, there's a county, what kind of pushback can a county do if there's overreach?
So, the association of county mayors have already stood up, and we all signed it and said, we don't want no part of that, our group has it, and that was a majority, a large majority of the county. There's only like one or two county mayors that support this. And, and again, Williamson County, some of those guys, they don't, they get enough tax revenue off of, sales tax, that's not, they're not, their bread and butter is not their property tax, so that's, but it'll, it'll hurt us, it'll, it'll. So, i- i- our, our property rate, whatever it is, our, our property rate, whatever it is now, if we can only raise it, if you need money, if you need money and that's what you can raise it, you're still gonna need money.
You're still gonna need more money.
And what they're saying now, you know, some of these county mayors are gonna say, look, our county commission's just gonna pass a, something where, every year, it's gonna fall, it's just, don't matter if we need it or not, it's just gonna go up four percent, and, I mean, and that's, that's bad for our citizens, we don't, cause we, y'all done a pretty good job keeping taxes down around here, we're some of the lowest in the state, um, but if we need money, which we will, we are gonna have to borrow money in the future. We got a couple of schools that are needing roofs and all kinds of stuff, that we're gonna have to at least work with the school system on, because whether we all like it or not, those are county buildings at the end of the day, uh, they're set there to manage our system and maintenance our buildings, but they're not there to, you know, so, right, so we have to address that in the long term, but, guys, it, it, it just, everything affect your bond rating, everything is gonna be hinted upon this silly bill, I mean, it's just.
Does the child bill fail recently? The last, last week it was moving.
Last year, it's moving right now, last year it got shut down.
And they near Arkansas, Arkansas, and they're gonna.
But last year was when they got, it got hexed.
Their social credit goes through, uh, Office of Agricultural Intelligence.
It's still in committee, it's still alive right now, for this year, and, and they, they did tweak some of it, they took some parts out, but some of it didn't like, but I, but I still think as a county, we have to step up, it, it would be a.
If I heard right, and I don't believe this.
Send it to this paper.
Child of thirty four thousand acres. Resolution, have you heard that?
I heard a number that wasn't quite that high, but I did, I did hear a number that was astronomical.
Thirty four thousand acres on the China.
Well, I, I didn't hear that number, that high of a number, that is high, I mean, that's the truth, that's rough.
Run that back.
Say it out loud, say it out loud.
He heard a rumor.
Hey, you heard a rumor, dude.
Hey, that's right, they run that rumor about.
Yeah.
About thirty four thousand acres?
So, I mean, I think.
I took the year. Well, they're selling.
Now, they won't get over next to Fort Campbell.
That's what they're worth, that's what they're on it, by the milk.
That's, that's where they'd be wanting from.
That's exactly right.
Sure.
So. Yes.
Where's our state law maker on this?
Right, right, that's enough of that.
Stop that right now.
It's, it's, as far as our state senator.
You only wanna zone that up there, right?
He is, he is part of this bill.
I represent.
Word of treaty.
Our, no, it's our, it's not reading.
Reese sponsored this bill.
Uh, not nineteen sixty eight, it's not.
No, 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 China bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, he's for, yeah, no, he's sponsoring it, but John Stevens is, uh, from everything I've heard and understood, he is with this bill moving through. But John Stevens is, uh, from everything I've heard and understood, he is with this bill moving through.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
Now, we, we gotta remember it's a caption bill, and the one part that caught my eyes and my ears when I heard the whole bill, and then Clint come out of his meetings and he said, did you hear about this? I'm like, yes, did y'all discuss it in the county commission part of it? And it was the same, so we, it's a caption bill, that's hid in there. What they're gonna do is release one sanction that they have on it right now, and it releases the whole poll and they can go in there and they're, part of that bill is to control. You know, that's not what it says when you go in there and read it.
Yeah, it don't say anything.
It don't say anything close to it, but it's part of it. I told him, we opposed it and, uh, we were gonna continue to oppose it, that's not, it's just not.
And our senators report.
I'm not gonna speak for him, but what I've understood, when I.
Dig up your phones.
Yes.
What good do they think they're gonna do?
What's a, what's a. Give them control?
Give them.
I don't know, y'all did hear that they're talking about a one-year moratorium on grocery tax too. It's, it's, believe it or not, and, and I agree that.
What are they gonna do about that?
I haven't heard the, oh, tax rate this year, we're looking at.
Is that just.
Lower.
Is that just, uh.
Well, the reason, I said, Marcus said the state's raising, everybody's property tax sky high this year.
Okay.
Evaluating.
She said the state's, it's gonna be high. And usually we.
The tax rate.
No, we're not, we would not, we would, okay, so what I've understood so far.
Three, three percent.
Three point two five is what we have and the state has six percent, but no, uh, what I'm understanding is we would not be collecting the three point two five either, or they would not be collecting and sending it to us. I think what would be happening is they have an influx of money that they would be using some of their, for lack of a better word, general fund to fund back into the counties.
They overused their money last year.
Uh, but I think, but I think what, I think, and, and again, I, I'm not a hundred percent on this, cause I, I just kinda dug my feet in a little bit on it, but I think what I understood is. The counties might not be directly impacted the full percentage, like if it's three point two five or three point seven five.
Two point five.
Uh, we would not be, uh.
Yeah, you would lose that.
We would not, somewhere or the other, we would get it back from the state, and that's what I'm understanding.
They got control over, bro.
And if that's the case, we wouldn't, it wouldn't affect us at all. But if you're talking about cutting the nine point two five as a whole and not giving back to the counties and letting each county just eat that three point two five sales tax on. Well, if they vote on it, they can.
If that's our money, the two point two five, two seven, yeah, that's no far.
We, we voted to put that on there.
That's correct, that comes from the state of Tennessee, it goes to the state and back to us. Yeah, but we're the one that voted to have that, I understand that, and, and we could stand to go half a percent, I wish we could get that in, but that's, that's neither here nor there. But, yeah, um, I wish, you know, I just want you to look at it, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, look at it and see, I, I read them, but I don't, all the time, but I do know that, uh. A lot of the mayors that I talked to have brought it up and said, I'm sure you read this and look into it, so, just something y'all look at, punch it in. When you got, when you're bored or watching the view, whatever.
Yeah, I was just.
Trying to catch. Residential, residential zone.
Tried to catch me too?
I did, you did.
I didn't.
I heard it before I walked in, you assumed you seen me.
I got hurt this long.
Is it a house?
Yes.
H R.
Yes, and, and you would be, uh, that's the one that'll limit, and it's not gonna say it on there.
I think I looked it up.
Yeah, you have to.
Cause I got a H R, I got some neighbors.
From the road. From the backside, don't come up the back.
Nobody was.
Go get the rest of the trees down in front of me.
That's what I understood.
Two thirds majority referendum.
A two thirds majority referendum before you could even, I mean.
Before you vote for it then.
Gosh, I would have a hard time knowing that we needed the money, I'd still have a hard time going there, vote for it myself, if, you know. If it's in a general election, you know, you're not gonna get.
And then, even if it passed the, the two thirds, uh, referendum, after four years, it would go back to whatever it was.
Somebody's messed with it. We got all these state, uh, funded offices and so forth, we throw the money back, their bill back to them.
Absolutely.
They're getting, they're getting a lot of push, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, you guys, this county commission.
County commission associations, they're, they're still advocating, and they're gonna continue to listen to us.
And, uh, association county mayors saying, yeah, hopefully they'll get a stop to it and, uh, so.
But you need to listen to the citizens.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Just remember, going is time to vote for.
I think it's.
Best way I know of to. Slow some of them down.
Y'all have any more questions or anything that you wanna talk? Oh. I do, sorry, I noticed. I know I talked to a lot of you and a lot of you have come to me and said that you would like to see a fair also, so I'm gonna attempt to put a fair committee together. Um, I will tell you, our budget right now is not looking good, um, you'll see it, get introduced to it, uh, budget finance will come on night. Um, however, we're asking to put some money back in that, that fair, uh, category because, well, it's gonna be probably under contracted services is what it's probably gonna be. But just remember, that money's in reserves, it's, it's in reserve for a reason. We, our, our, um, tourism dollar, it's gonna come in a little bit up this year. And, you know, that pot of money, as Rick can tell you, it's, what I want, I guess what I'm trying to say is, don't think because you see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tourism, um, that we can put that on wages. Uh, that doesn't happen, it's very specific about what you can put that on. And, uh, when I got on the website and read into it, um, you know, some of that money can be spent for things like that, some of that money can be spent for, if we needed to put, uh. You know, if we need to get some of that stuff done at, at the Graves Cross, um, things like that, so, just keep that in mind. I spoke with a young lady today, super sweet young lady, um, she, she's marrying Jay Cook Rogers. Um, and she was a part of the fair committee in Henry County, she's from Henry County, and she had some really cheap ideas that families will be able to come out and do for free. Um, like, uh, they're trying to start up a junior livestock, something, uh, with Brett Wallace, and they were talking about having, you know. Showings and all that stuff at the fair, um, she said it was huge in Henry County, so, bring your cows, she said that she washes her cows every day, uh, and she said, uh.
Curl the cows.
Yeah, and, and she said that, that, that specific thing put her through college, so, um, so.
They'll come from everywhere, they won't necessarily be from here.
It's been beaten by Denver.
So if you are somebody that has mentioned that and you want to be on that, is that something that you would like to see on the fair committee, cause we gotta, we're not gonna have a lot of money, but we gotta be very specific with what we bring to our citizens. I'd, I'll be honest, unless some crazy happens, I don't ever see us getting a carnival type setting this year in this short a time. She told me they were like two years out, so she said, if you don't book them every two years, you're not gonna get them, I don't know, you know, we, we can look at all that. But if something, any of you are interested in being on that, that, that fair, I don't know what you want to call it, fair committee or whatever.
Fair carnival.
Yeah, so.
What, 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 what would you have?
I think the best area at the time would be.
He's got surface kind of felt.
Soccer field.
Down there where the soccer side plays on, you know, where we had a barbecue cook off. Uh, we had, we end up having close to fifteen hundred people there that day and we still haven't room for that anymore, really. Parking will have to be dedicated like over to the.
Last year, with, last year or two years ago, I, I remember talking to Hugh Proctor, which had some, you know, fair.
Yeah.
Contacts or something, so he may, maybe somebody to get ahold of as well. But I think that he used to work affairs or carnivals or whatever, and.
He's done a lot of the mud balls and stuff for those, I know he's very experienced.
You're talking basically about a county.
Yeah.
So he may, you know, he may have some contacts whether or not, you know.
Right, you know, I just, I think it's, it's good for the county, uh, you get out and see everybody, you bring in people from, that'll spend their tax dollars determinedly, you know. Uh, so, and I think our, I think our citizens will love it, and it's something that they can do relatively cheap with their families.
You gotta pick the right time of year if you're gonna do it. Nobody wants to be out here at three hundred degrees and three hundred percent.
The young lady today, and I won't say her name, but the young lady today told me that she's done it ever since birth, her family has traveled to these fairs and done the showings and everything and. They are the, they lead the junior, you know what I just told you, the cattle whatever, so, she said, absolute best weekend is the last weekend in September. October, she said, sometimes you get good weather, but there's a lot of, um, a lot of fall breaks in October, and she said that Henry County decided not to ever have one in October again. Uh, she said, if you can, and I, and I don't wanna have one the same weekend as theirs either, so.
That's backing off on the temperature, remember, like last part of September.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna compete with nobody, but, but even if we, if we were to compete with somebody, we, I, I'm, I'm like y'all, the ones that have come talk to me about it, I'm ready to see it because, just getting people out, talking to each other, you know. You know, and some of that stuff, so, but if any of you wanna be on that, just let me know, I'll put you on there, I need all the help I can get, because if we're gonna try to pull it off for this year, which we can, um, you know.
I don't see yet this year myself.
We, we could, we could have some sort of, but I, now, I can say that it's something that we can build on, and, and she's talking about putting in for grants and things like that in the future years, and eventually having maybe a fairgrounds. Um, something like that, so, but if any of you, Rick, y'all.
Rick.
Rick be good.
Say if you wanna be on the fair zoning.
He needs to be, he's part of that company.
You will.
I think he's put Bradbury on it, cause he wants a zoning.
Zoning the fair committee. I think it's a good idea, even if it was, even if you started out small and, you know, with just the agricultural trucks, I think it's a good idea.
Didn't have some, you know, bring the cattle in or whatever, have a, have a chili capo. All right, anybody else?
We do have a lot of food trucks, you know, come a little bit, try to have things, kinda these showings.
I like the food truck, man, they put a stage up for a band.
Acasa's still having their, their food.
He looked like it, he said, I'm ready to.
I'm not showing up if there's no food there. We don't need any motions or anything, if y'all are done, we're done. Thank you for the.